I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Son's Glass. Tiny and Son's Glass was established in 1978 when my father and brother and I. We're at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do our windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Son's Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Son's Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Son's Glass, 1-888-64-TINIES. Just call. Thank you.
I'm Arthur Boyle of Performance Appraisal Services. We're residential real estate appraisers with a company founded in 1994 by Mike Giannelli and I in the basement of my house in Malden. We've since grown to have offices in Malden and Pembroke. We serve the eastern Mass counties, including Cape Cod. A good client for us is an attorney, or a private landowner, or a private property owner, who's going through a probate process, or a divorce division of property. Call us at 781-293-6900. Ask for Arthur Boyle, or Amanda Boyle Graziosi. Our first name is Performance.
And welcome to the Pembroke Board of Selectmen's meeting of Monday, March 13th. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 15, and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. Few weeks ago, the Board of Selectmen extended an invitation to the Chamber of Commerce to ask local business folks to come in and speak to the board and to the public, and explain what their business is, and what services that they provide to the people of Pembroke. Tonight, we have Janet LaBerge with us. Janet, would you like to come up front, please, as this is?
Thank you.
Must be the smaller one, is that correct?
Both of them.
Both of them.
Multimedia tonight.
As long as my good side's to the camera, the backside, so that's my best view. Thank you for extending the invitation to the Chamber of Commerce. We greatly appreciate that. We'd like to work more with the town, and with the townsfolk, so this is a good start. And I know that Mike Damon was here a few weeks ago and said you guys didn't throw tomatoes, and you were pretty decent, so I hope for the same myself. My name's Janet LaBerge. I run Dirty Deeds, which is a junk removal company in town, as well as Good Deeds, which is the thrift store in town. I've been in business 12 years now. I've lived in Pembroke 16, 17 years, something like that. I have two boys, and I sit on the Council on Aging Board. I'm the president of the Council on Aging Board here. I know you've helped out with that before, though. And I've sat on the Pembroke Chamber Board. I also sit on the Bay State Community Services Board there, so I try to be actively involved in town. Our business is no different than really one of Enrico and John, or one of the other kind of big companies, where we charge less than they do, because we don't have to pay those franchise fees. But we try to be a little different in our mission, in that I'm a crazy recycler. People might just say I'm just crazy, but I'm a crazy recycler. And I grew up in New Hampshire, where we kept our good cars in the front yard, and our parts cars in the backyard, so you didn't throw out things that weren't broken. To that end, when I started this business 12 years ago, I wanted to make sure that anything that was usable would be kept out there, and not thrown into the landfill, which hurts our environment. And I found it was quite challenging to do that, because a lot of the nonprofits around here, the Savers, Salvation Army, are very particular about what they can or can't take, because they're selling those items. So I found a lot of different ways to move stuff along. Sometimes the town wasn't happy with that. Some things went curbside on my busy street, and some neighbors were pleased with that, some neighbors weren't. And some people would show up at my house at all hours of the day and night, pick up free things in my garage. Most people were happy about that. My family was not happy about that. So three and a half years ago, we struck up the idea of opening our own thrift store. And we named it Good Deeds. So Dirty Deeds says a dirty word, Good Deeds does good stuff. It meets my goals of keeping things out of the landfill, because we'll sell everything from cleaning supplies right on up to furniture. What I have found in doing this business was that we're in a lot of garages and basements. So we see a lot of pruners, a lot of socket wrench sets, cleaning supplies, rakes, those kind of things. You can't donate those items to Salvation Army or Savers. So inevitably, those things will just get thrown in the trash, and that doesn't make any sense to me. So the store has allowed us to keep those things out of landfill. Secondly, we're able to sell those items really dirt cheap, because we want to move them along, because there's always something else coming in behind them. So that helps out the people that shop at our store. We have a very active Facebook page with some, just over 6,600 members. I like to think I have my own stalkers that are just out there, but maybe it's just that we have people interested in the stuff that we sell. The third thing that the store really meets me for a goal is, I think it's important to give back to the community. I know that I'm a fairly fortunate person, and having been a social worker for 20 years before I started this business, I saw a lot of people that didn't have a roof over their heads, they were homeless, had substance abuse issues. They had people that didn't love them, didn't have large group of friends around them. They struggled to pay their bills. They struggled with hearing voices, or having diabetes, or other health issues. So I consider myself fairly fortunate, and I'm fairly healthy. I have friends, I have money in the bank, and I have a safe place to sleep at night. And I know there are people right here in our own town that don't have one of those four things. Hence the reason we have two food pantries in this town that are well-attended. So I feel it's my obligation as a business owner and leader in this town to give back to our community. What Good Deeds allows us to do is that every month, once the sales cover the expenses of running a store, everything over and above that, we give to a different local charity. So last month, we gave $2,500 to Bay State Community Services, where I sit proud of them on that board. This month, we're helping out Prayers for Charlotte, which is named after a little girl that had neuroblastoma, which is a form of cancer, and she passed away from that. And her parents, who would love them rather than throw them up to tents, like I probably would have done, started a charity in her name, with the point of raising enough money to build a little playground in her honor of Braintree. Not only were they able to accomplish that, they now have a road race every April in Braintree. They've raised over $175,000 in that short time with all volunteers. So it's organizations like that that we try to help and try to promote. I think that that helps other people, maybe inspires other people to do good in their town as well, and to give back to others. So that's what makes us a little bit different than most. I do work with a lot of elderly people. I often like elderly people a great deal, because they're no-nonsense, and they kind of tell you right where things are. I wasn't just looking at you, though. No, I was looking your way as well. The only guy I'm skipping is Matt. But that's basically what we do. I'm a proud member of this town. I love Pembroke. I think, as I said to Tiny before he passed away, I had a chance to meet with him at the Business of the Year Dinner a couple of years ago. He is the model of what I've modeled my business afterwards. Because when I moved to Pembroke, all I heard was Tiny and Son's Glass, and how they, you know, "Oh, you need something? Ask Tiny." And they were always giving to the charities around there, always helping out, they're always donating whenever they can. And I think that's how businesses should be, and how I wanted my business to be. So I was very pleased to see that Representative Cutler was able to push forward and have that corner named in Tiny's honor. I'm very proud to be friends and sit on the board with Peter, his son. But we have a lot of businesses like that in town, and most of them are Chamber members, and that's what we're trying to bring to this town, too, is a sense of, we're all in this together. With the Chamber Day that we did last summer, where the fire and police and Chamber members were playing against each other. Thank goodness for your son, he's a good softball player. I think we'll make it again this year. But those kind of things, and try to be a little bit more involved in our community, because we all live here, and we shall be doing the best we can to make it a good community.
Any questions for Janet?
No, maybe you could just put down your address and your phone number for the people out there, so that they may not know where your place is.
Sure. We are located at 209 Water Street. We are actually facing Skusett Street, which is Route 139. For folks who have been here in town long enough, it used to be the old Q-Town billiards. But we also have Pembroke Dry Cleaners on the same floor, and then Kathy Jo's Dance Studio, a club on one side. They can reach me at 781-308-4447, or they can visit us on the web at www DIRTYDEEDSCHIEF.COM, or www.GOODDEEDSTORE.COM. And if people want to join our Facebook page for Good Deeds, I don't know how to explain how to do that, other than go to the search bar and type in Good Deeds Store, and it will come up, and you'll ask to join, and I will allow you to join. So that's basically how people can reach us. We're headed into our busy season, so, you know, "Call early, call often," as they like to say. And also, I'm a big fan of people taking advantage of their natural resources. Pembroke, I say this nonstop, Pembroke has the best deal going of all the towns around here for trash pickup. I remember the days when we'd put out seven barrels and one big item a week. You have to call ahead now and put out the one big item a week. But it costs us $80 to throw a mattress and box spring, the entire dumpster. Pass that along to you. If you can put those out, if your big trash day is Tuesday, we'll come to your house and work with you on Monday, we'll haul those out and put it out curbside. The homeowner has to call ahead, but that would save them $80. So Pembroke's really very generous in their trash pickup. That is not common in areas around us.
Any other questions? Would you get up?
Well, just more of a statement. I don't think there's anybody in town that doesn't know who you are, as a matter of fact, so...
As long as I'm not in the police blotter, I figure that's a good thing.
Well, the cheapest here, I was wondering why. But you've been honored by the Chamber, by the Commonwealth of Mass, by just about everybody in your organization, and Tiny Brown was an extraordinary guy, and there's nobody better to model their business after than Tiny Brown.
I had two comments, if I may. The first one is, I've been to your store, and I can tell the folks at home, if you'd like to take an hour or two and do some browsing and some shopping, it's a great place to go. I was amazed at what is in your store.
Thank you.
And the second thing I'd like to say is that I would like to thank you for all the work that you have done and are doing at the Council on Aging. Things are really humming along there, and a lot of it has to do with the Council on Aging Board, and the friends of the Council on Aging. So thank you for all the work that you've done with them.
I give a lot of credit to Anna Sierra, she's been a great hire. It's been just over a year, and things are really going well.
And she has been. Thank you.
I just have one, not a question, but just a comment, that I've also been there. Myself, we're looking for some things for the Boys Club. Went there and picked them up at a very, very cheap price. And while I was there, they donated some heavy bags for the Boys Club, so the kids could work out on, so we appreciate that.
You never know what comes in. It's an adventure every day. Well, I appreciate the kind words. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And we look forward to the Chamber of Commerce coming in.
Thank you for your service. I know you guys are in the hot seat on a regular basis, so thank you for your service, and the people appreciate the work that you all do.
Well, I hope everybody heard all of the wonderful charity work that you and your company do. And I know you've won awards for doing that, but people should know that. So you're doing a great job, Janet. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, kindness is contagious, you know? So you put it out there, you drop a pebble, and you hope it spreads, at least it's spreading in our community. Very proud of the work we do, and my staff is just wonderful and kind, and so far, so good.
Very good. Thank you for coming in.
All right. Thank you very much.
We wish you success, so that you can continue.
Thanks.
The second item that we have before us here is a review of the Surplus Property Auction for a parcel of land on Bartlett Street. The town fulfilled its obligation with the advertising of it, and we have a responder to it. We set a minimum bid, and then we heard from our legal department, and our legal department informed us that we need to put this purchase of the property on Bartlett Street in an article before the May Town Meeting. And upon approval of that article, and a mutually satisfactory purchase and sale agreement, we can move forward on that. And we have a motion before us that we need to make, and I will pass on.
Okay. Move to award to Kimberly J. Dickinson and Dean Kivicki an agreement for purchase of the assessors parcel number B23115, known as Bartlett Street, with the town of Pembroke, for the amount of $2,600 pending annual Town Meeting approval on May 9th, 2017, and the execution of a mutually satisfactory purchase and sale agreement.
A motion by Arthur. Is there a second? Second by Bill. Any questions?
Question.
Question, Dan.
Ed, could you just describe for the board and for the public, that is this process done with every property that Pembroke sells? And if you could just explain further?
Well, we have two sets of properties that are available for disposal. One is a property such as this, which was deeded to the town in 1984, and a subsequent Town Meeting accepted the property, and with no restrictions. And then you might have, actually, a third category, where you would have property that had some restrictions, where they would be isolated for DPW purposes, or for conservation purposes. We've taken properties in the past that were under the care and custody of the Board of Selectmen, and turned them over to the Conservation Commission for open space. And then we have those properties that are acquired by the town for a lack of payment of taxes, and those are called tax title properties. And those properties, we have auctioned off in the past, never needing Town Meeting approval. Unfortunately, this category requires Town Meeting approval to be disposed of by the Board of Selectmen, and therefore, Town Council today ruled and gave us guidance regarding the motion, and so Sabrina and I are going to request that that article be placed, have the Board of Selectmen open the special Town Meeting warrant tonight, and then we will conclude that.
Can we do it next week with the other one?
Whatever works for you.
Next week? We'll do both at the same time, if that's okay?
Yeah. So we're going to ask the Board to open a special Town Meeting, so that when the vote occurs on May the 9th, that property will be available the next day, as opposed to waiting until July 1st, if it was at the annual Town Meeting.
So just a further question. I understand that, and I understand that process. One question that may come up from the public, that maybe you can answer now, and if not, talk to Town Council and ask them. Town Council has had this on their plate, they've known about this property for a couple months now. Why is this determination just coming out now?
I don't have an answer for that why. We found out today that Town Council ruled that we needed to have a Town Meeting room. I cannot answer that.
Okay. So I don't think there's an issue going before a Town Meeting with this. I think the Board of Selectmen can support. This was a loan bid on this particular property, and it's a mechanism that we need to go forward with, to execute this deal. So I don't think there's a problem with it. The only thing that I would like Town Council to think of in the future is if there's a property like this, if they can let the interested parties know ahead of time.
And it would have been, we would have appreciated knowing about it in advance as well. I wasn't thrilled that we found out about it this afternoon.
Any other questions about?
No, I agree with Dan. I think it's a formality to go through this, and, you know, it only makes sense for Kimberly and Dean to have the property, because they think they're the neighbors on three sides of it, and the fourth side is the street. So it really makes only sense that they have it, so it's a mile of red tape, but it'll be worth it in the end.
Very good.
So do we need a motion to continue this election?
No, no. You can make the motion right now, it's just opening the warrant to include that article that Sabrina has requested we postpone for a week.
Right. So do we need to postpone it for a week?
No, no. We were requesting you act on that motion tonight.
Right. And we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Come right up front, please.
Probably all my land by now, right? Not Kimberly, I'm Dean. But I just want to know what the formality is. So we were the only bidder, which I'm glad we were. So May 9th, you put this in front of a regular Town Meeting, and what, do you just bring it up to the public? So who, does somebody have to vote on it, or does your vote count, or how does that work?
Well, their votes count. I mean, they're registered voters, so...
Yeah, it'll be a vote of the Town Meeting, but quite honestly, I mean, they'll see it for what it is, that it's good for the town.
Well, who votes? That's what my question is.
The entire Town Meeting.
Anybody who's there?
Right.
All 150 people.
Oh, 150 people.
You'll be voted May 9th, 7:00 at the high school.
It's a good way to get you there, right?
Okay. All right. So we just say, this is what we did?
Yeah, it'll come up as an article, one out of probably 10, or eight, or whatever it is, in a special Town Meeting. And the voters are pretty sharp, they get it. So I don't think that there's a danger that they'll, you know, turn it into something that it isn't.
Well, I said this would take a year, and it'll be a year exactly in May, so anyway. All right. Well, thank you guys very much. I appreciate everything you've done for us.
Okay. Under Board Action Items, we have Articles 11 through 18 for inclusion in the annual Town Meeting warrant. So we would need a vote if you would so desire to add these articles. This, my agenda, it says Articles 11 through 18, but we have more articles than that. Is that an issue, Mr. Thon?
No, did... I wonder if you, what did you vote?
We voted 1 through 10, which we deem to be routine articles.
You did 1 through 10, you did marijuana, and then you did the additions.
Okay.
The only ones left in here are the remain.
And that's 11 through 18?
11 through 20, and 22 through 27.
Okay.
Because 21 was marijuana.
Okay. Are there any questions by the Board on any of these articles? And if there isn't any, I'd look for a motion to add these articles for inclusion in the warrant.
Mr. Jones, I move Article 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27.
A motion by Bill, and a second by Arthur.
Question.
Question.
So to the Town Administrator, Ed, all these articles as presented here, monetary values of what we can see here, are they part of your proposed balance budget?
No, they're not.
No.
No. The game plan for the Town Meeting is to have each of the proponents of these articles explain the need at Town Meeting for these particular articles, and that the consensus among the department heads that are proposing that, is that they will use Town Meeting as a forum to begin the process of informing the public between now and next year as to the need for those particular articles. And we have Chief Wall here, who, you know, will be one of those department heads that will stand up and explain to the full Town Meeting, and to the people that are watching on TV about the need for his proposed article.
Right. So that's, it seemed like a small question to Ed, but it's a very important one, not just for this Board, but for the Advisory Committee, to the department heads that are advocates of their articles, and, you know, ultimately, Town Meeting, the community, to vote on it. So I would hope that the proponents have built their case, so that they can bring it to Town Meeting floor, and gather up as much support as they can. And I also hope that Town Administrator, the accountant, and the Advisory Committee have contingency plans in place, should these go through. You don't have to say what they are tonight, Ed, but it's something you already know intuitively, that's your job as the head financial officer of the town, but I need to bring it out in the public.
Sure. Point well taken.
Very good. Okay, so we need to vote on this motion. All those in favor of Bill's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, it's unanimous. Our next action item is to vote Articles to be included in the special within the annual Town Meeting warrant. And in front of us, we have five articles. And if you had a chance to look over these articles, are there any questions? If there isn't, I'll entertain a motion.
All right. I'll move that we include the five articles, but I'm hoping for a second for discussion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Arthur, second by Bill, and discussion, Arthur.
Yeah, as I was reading the article, and listening to Dan, he made a valid point in that, you know, we're not necessarily supporting these as much as we are giving the advocacy groups an opportunity to come and be heard, and I think that's the important difference, that there may be some that we don't necessarily support, but we're giving the public the opportunity to be the ultimate voter.
That's correct. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second, and we've concluded our discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, it's unanimous. We're going to have a discussion by Mr. Thon on the municipal use of the abatement process, and I'll turn it over to you, Ed.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board, you have a handout that is several pages long, that includes a summary sheet and a sample of abatements that we have for the municipal trash program. I'd like the Board to look at this for a couple of weeks. It shows the Board exactly what abatements are allowed under the current system. And they range from senior citizen abatements, to other means of private disposal of trash, summer residence requirements, vacancy requirements, meaning the house is vacant, and no trash is picked up there. Some that don't necessarily are applied for a lot, multi-unit requirements, and in-law apartments. These are rare. The ones that we definitely deal with all the time are senior citizen, other means of private disposal, summer residence, and vacancies. So I'd like the Board just to look at this, you know, for about a week or two, and then we'll bring that up for discussion. And we'll explain the kinds of abatements that occur, and if any members of the Board have questions regarding the forms, or the abatement process, you know, please feel free to send me an email, or give me a call, and I'll be happy to explain that to you. So that's it for now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask Chief Wall if he's going to be here for a little while? Are you going to stay till the end of the meeting, do you know? Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any questions from the Board on Ed's proposal on these abatement procedures? Would it be acceptable, Mr. Thon, we'll put a two-week timeframe on this?
That'd be great, thank you. That'd be great, thank you.
So we'll put this down for discussion in two weeks. Now, Mr. Fawn, I'll turn to you again on the next issue, which is to a draft letter from the Board of Selectmen supporting a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Valley and Birch Streets.
As part of the application process with Mass DOT because towns just can't unilaterally ban trucks on streets, you need the permission of the Department of Transportation to do this. And obviously, in this case, Valley and Birch Street originate in the town of Duxbury, so we're going to need the assistance of the town of Duxbury, and they'll be acting on a similar letter shortly. And then we'll prepare the application that will have these letter support and then information that are being furnished by the Old Colony Planning Council about the percentage of truck traffic on these two streets. I might add that of the streets that we have excluded trucks on, Oak Street, Water Street, Brick Hill Lane, Mountain Avenue, High Street, of the numbers that we've encountered in the past 15 years or so, the numbers on Valley and Birch Street are off the charts. 5% and higher is what's required by Mass DOT to ban truck traffic. And I might also add Mill Street and West Street is two other streets that have truck exclusions. In the case of Valley and Birch, these numbers are double digits. They're like in the 12 to 13% range, which is the highest that we've seen for any street. So obviously, the, there's a lot of east-west traffic in that part of town, connecting Route 53 with Route 27. That appears to be the reason for that truck traffic. You can't eliminate local traffic, you know, whether it's a delivery truck or a construction situation, but if it's, if it's heavy vehicles that are going to use Pembroke as a shortcut, then that's one of the things that we put in the application. Also, you have to provide an alternate means of getting around Birch and Valley Street. And basically, it would be using state numbered routes. So that would mean going up 53 to Route 14, or Route 53, you know, down to Route 27, what have you. So those are things that we put in the application. And with the assistance of the Old Colony Planning Council, we put together, you know, the cover letter with all the supporting backup materials. So as part of the process, we're asking the Board to sign those letters of support for the project.
Okay, do we, when will we have those letters to sign?
Next Monday.
Hopefully next Monday.
We'll have it for, for the Board to sign next Monday.
Good. Any questions for Ed? Dan?
Yeah, Ed, I don't know if it should emanate from this board, but maybe a note from you to the Old Colony Planning Council will suffice. As part of these truck exclusions, I wonder if another step, a next step, an added step could be taken as well. Maybe not from, as they say, from this board, but from the Old Colony Planning Council and on through to the DOT and even further, that we could actively petition petition big outfits like Google Maps, Waze, to put these truck exclusions in their system, because they may or may not know about them. So that's something that I'll bring up to the Old Colony Planning Council the next meeting, but if you could send them a note and just put it on their upcoming agenda in case I don't have the opportunity to bring it up at that meeting, because that's really, where it's really going to count, where we are now, GPS. If GPS tells the truck driver, don't go on this road, that says more than a sign can. So I think that's the next step in this day and age.
Right. And Chief Wall and I have had this conversation many times regarding that, and that, you know, that's why we're finding, you know, you know, a real spike in, in some of the traffic counts. And Birch Street and Valley Street are just incredibly off the charts.
Good. Thank you. So we'll have that in a week. Next item on our agenda is we have a note from the Conservation Commission. They have, they want us to move to accept the resignation of Sharon Tools from Conservation effective immediately.
Move to accept the resignation of Sharon Tools, what's your grade?
Second.
A motion by Bill, second by Arthur. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, unanimous. We need to discuss and come up with a recommendation to appoint, to appoint a Selectmen's representative to the Community Preservation Committee. Seems last week we accepted the resignation, and according to the Community Preservation Act and the vote that was taken by the town of Pembroke in 2008, we have members on that board.
Okay, just, I haven't heard anyone suggest that anything be changed. So if, I know, I know you've mentioned that, but I don't think there's anyone on this board or anyone in the community that wants to change any of the rules. I think the, what was just mentioned in the letter that we read tonight and Bill read out loud, is that a best practice would be to have someone from the community, and that's what we're going to attempt to do, but if we can't find someone from the community, and a member of the Board of Selectmen needs to sit on the committee in the interim, especially with town meeting coming up, I don't have an issue with that, and I don't think the public should, should either. So, but no one is trying to, no one's trying to change any rules that I've seen. So I just want to make sure that, that's not on the table, from my understanding.
Yeah, well, it's not on my table.
Okay, because, but you mentioned it twice, so I just want to make sure the public is thinking.
I did, because Bill read this letter, and, and I don't even know why that letter has even got here, because I believe it was a misunderstanding from our previous meeting when I identified the person that resigned was a Selectmen's appointee, and we needed to find someone else. And I think somebody took that and said, oh, now they want to put a Selectman on there.
Well, we might.
Which is.
And we can.
Well, we can, yes. We can. But I, I would, I would vote to do that if somebody would tell me why it's necessary in view of all the good work that's been done up to now. I mean, if it's just a case of not ever getting a report back here from the two people that are on there to represent us, then let's, let's fix that problem. But if a Selectman wants to be on there, I don't really have a problem with it.
Yeah, I'd, it, we'll bring it up in two weeks, obviously, but it's, but it's here on the table now. I think the best practice for, especially for this committee, this type of committee, is to have, reach out to the public and have someone from the public at large have the seat. But if we can't get someone that's from the, from the public, and we have had difficulties in the past getting the public to be seated in committees, then I think it's incumbent upon the Selectmen to make sure that someone from this board is seated there, whether a, appointed from the public or someone, or a member of the Board of Selectmen, especially with town meeting coming up.
We've got two weeks to make a concerted effort and a good faith effort to fill this seat, and we've got over 10,000 registered voters. We're bound to find one out of 10,000 that'll take the CPC seat.
I hope so, yeah. I hope so. Okay, so we're going to table this for two weeks then. Okay. We're in possession of a notice from the Council on Aging Board of Directors that they have two vacancies, and they have met, and they are recommending the appointment of Carrie Bowman and Joseph Ri, Joseph Ryan to be associate members of the Council on Aging Board.
Move the appointment of Ms. Bowman and Mr. Ryan.
Motion by Arthur, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Matthew. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, that's unanimous. Thank you. We have the minutes of the Selectmen's meeting of February 27th.
I move the minutes of February 27th, as written.
Motion by Arthur, and a second by Bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, that's unanimous. Do we have any old business that anyone would like to bring up? Hearing none, we'll move to the Town Administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, you've got a handout that talks about the hazardous, Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day will be held at the Pembroke Recycling Center on Saturday, April the 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Items which are acceptable and not acceptable are listed on the town website at www.pembroke-ma.gov. You must be a town resident, have a current recycling sticker, and you cannot dispose of business or commercial hazardous waste.
I just have one question.
Question, Bill?
Yes.
Does it cost anybody to bring any of this hazardous waste to the recycling center on hazardous waste day?
No.
Okay, so that's all free, so if somebody has 15 gallons of paint laying around their household, and they wanted to bring it, then they can do that? There's no cost to them?
Right.
Okay, good.
We have a line item that's in our solid waste budget that account, that accounts for that.
Very good, thank you. Ask the Selectmen, any issues from the Board? Moving on to new business, is there any new business anyone would like to discuss? Hearing none. Upcoming issues for the Board, on March 20th, we'll have a public hearing, a street acceptance for Equestrian Way and Fizzet Lane. On March 27th, Jennifer Mathias, the Hill Bog Project update. Also, March 27th, Wage and Personnel Board Appointment, Deborah Wall, Library Director on Articles. She wants to discuss with the Board her articles. Do we have a need for executive session, Mr. Fawn?
No, sir.
No, sir.
No.
Thank you. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen is March 20th at 7:00 p.m. Any other business to come before the Board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just would like the Board to know and the public to know that Town Hall offices, the library, the Council on Aging will be closed due to the upcoming inclement weather, and I believe the School Department also has announced that schools will be closed tomorrow.
Chief Wall, did you, would you like to address the Board?
No, I just didn't know if you were going to have any questions on some of the articles I put in, so. We're open tomorrow.
The Police Department will be on duty tomorrow.
Well, while we have you here, Chief is part of, co-director of the emergency management in town. Is there, is there any information ahead of the storm you'd like to put out there for the public?
The latest update is the storm has moved a little bit westward, so we're hopefully going to get maybe a little more rain, a little less snow. But still, if you don't have to travel tomorrow, don't let the DPW take care of the roads, stay off the roads the best you can. There's a parking van in effect as of, I think, 5:00 o'clock tomorrow morning, all through, all through Tuesday and into Wednesday morning. So let's give the DPW an opportunity to clean up after this mess and stay safe.
And one other thing, people are wondering, wondering about your trash pickup, it's delayed for a day.
Don't put your trash barrels out. Tomorrow with the wind, we're expecting it's going to get blown up anyway.
That's right.
Let's just hunker down and take the day. If you can stay home, stay home.
Thank you, Chief. No other issues before us? Take a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Move to adjourn by Arthur, and a second?
Second.
Second by Matthew. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for watching this evening, and we'll see you next Monday evening at 7:00 p.m. Thanks.